Yeah. So we. Uh, um. Okay. We do. And it's. I'm crazy to do that at our regular meetings and this is a special meeting. Um. And. I would. Um. For you. Um. Do this is okay. There you go. Okay. And. Got it. So.
Yes.
I'm with you. Don't worry. All right. We adjusted the. Then. But we. Either. You. To the. The. Great. Thanks. Oh shit. Wait. Is this? Is this? There's. I learned. I understand. That also. Another. This. It's. It's. Different. So. Um. How. Do. Yeah. Really. Um. 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 Listen. Okay. I will. Order. Bye. Yeah. Yes. So. So. Um. So. Did. Some other country. Right. But. Some. Like. Oh. Um. The. Um, I'll say. It's done. Uh. Over. Um. You know. Um, but it's. This. The. The mission. The. The helping. Because. Uh. Uh. Right. Um, uh, the self. Yeah. This. Job. All. For. Um. Point of. Thanks. I was just. They're. Everything we. And so. So be back. Uh. To. To. Just. What? Well. Yeah. Well. For. Or. Uh, um. Okay, fair. Fair when you got the what? I'm sure it's the. But. That. Some other. Okay, good. Right. And balance. So load two, three, afternoon. Pressure. Thirty twenty. Okay. You have to. I can hear you. In which second. And. Two. And. This. Okay. Right. Oh. On. Here we go. And. Get it. Or. Yeah. Fire. Those. Draw. I think it's a great. All right. Dick. He. Draw. Draw. Had. Just. It goes. Yeah. Yeah. Hello. Oh. What? It's. It's. Here. Yeah. Two. You did. Yeah. What didn't? That was what attracted. On. To. And. See. Oh my. Yes. We've. Let's. And it changed at thirty. That's why. Creation of press. We went back. And. Don't. To make the best. Oh. Oh. My thing of emphasis is kind of be. Yeah. So I. This. This fall through discussions. Email. And feel that it's. I'll not record to get approval for the town. I feel like much like we need to. Modify the building for the truck to fit in the building. This is an expense that in my mind is. It's, it's a want. Like we want one. Right. Yeah. It's, it's not necessary for the truck to function as fast. And so I wanted to have. Um, a conversation about it. I think it's important. I come so that he could talk to us about why he feels that the, the painting isn't necessary. Um, of this, this truck. Um. And so I, I guess I would. Leave it at that in this moment. Um, and let Ryan address. Of his beliefs or his feelings on the matter and we can go from there if that makes sense.
Not like now or at the meeting?
Right now.
Okay.
Like before we approved. The final approval of this.
More, okay.
Yeah, I, I was thinking that it would be, you know, be in the best interest to hear Brian.
I move it. So the truck we're looking at was originally three hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred. And the truck is right here. I would change up on the new truck. This people fly down this Monday. Move on. Um. One of the main purposes on the change of is the longevity of the truck. We, when we approved this to the DC committee, we were going for a ten year plan for the new truck. This truck we figured out right here, we got fifteen years. I've met the five years, it's fifty percent longer than we were expecting. By putting a new paint job, it's going to protect the longevity of the fifteen year service of the truck and not be rusty and such when it grows up here. Um. Because it's going to use care to cycle that well, the stretches and things on. Um, two, it wasn't just the paint. It was actually paint and the lettering of that cost included. So the lettering was four thousand dollars upon its own.
Well, to, to just to clarify, the lettering was a separate line on the, the itemized list that he sent us. So there was the paint that had thirty-two thousand in that lettering, which was four thousand. Um, so it, we, we were not taking away the lettering.
No problem. Um. So truck originally was three forty-nine five. I. Change up a down. We go as a package deal. If they want to get rid of the truck, if they want to sell it to us, the truck is, is for this town. Um. But for them to knock it down, basically we do a bundle package. And the bundle package included. Having three people down there covering the hotel costs included. It was going to cover those costs. Be transported back to the airport and such. It was going to be painting the truck, lettering the truck, brand new tires, brand new brakes, undercoating the truck as well as delivering. Now originally when they were selling this truck for three hundred and forty-nine five, that gave them nothing. The delivery was pretty expensive. Um, I think it was well over seven thousand dollars just to cover the truck. So. Yeah, pretty much. Close to a hundred thousand dollar truck. Got three hundred and forty-five thousand. Um. And again, you know, the yellow truck, you know, there is, there is some one. That. We've done. More compliance with this truck. Um, everything that we look for has been needs for this truck. And I would say that this paint job is need to protect the body of this truck, the longevity of this truck. In particular resale value in the future where we expire this truck in fifteen years. As well as it's also going to match our fleet. You know, it's nice to have this matching representation for this town. But also if they go, we were going through this, it was. And. A brand house of truck. Through discussions with JD and such, and, and I know JD's gone, Bill's gone, it's kind of difficult now, but. You know, we punted on the nine hundred thousand dollars. Other town, I hunted on the deal to make sure there was more money in other areas of town. So ultimately three twenty-five, we save ten five percent. And if this truck if it's painted, you are to show up with a brand new looking truck. So three hundred and twenty-five thousand, I mean. And like I said, it's bright yellow. Most people that run bright yellow trucks are either full-size city trucks or pedal trucks. Where all of the. Like I said, it's to protect the longevity of the truck. As well as, yes, it is a want with the look of the truck. Um. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Today. Basically. We really said three hundred and twenty-five thousand on this truck. If it shows up painted and looks brand new, they're going to say, wow, we, we don't think three hundred and twenty-five thousand on this truck.
Thanks, Ryan. Um. I'm. A. Going to reserve personal opinion on this. I think. In like that it's an additional cost. Um. That. We want to be very careful. This is a big cost to the town, the taxpayers, and. It behooves us to be transparent with folks, um, who. Especially those who came to the last meeting and voted, you know, to go ahead with the purchase of this. This is. Prepared about this and.
No, I agree. I do. We found the best truck that's absolutely possible to be acquired on the market. And. We were under the three hundred and fifty thousand. That was one of the. We saved even twenty-five thousand.
Ryan, in addition, though, let's.
But this wasn't.
Hold on. In addition, though, let's consider we have to spend money on the door because that was another piece of information that was not at the last town meeting. So we have two. Two. Information. Have before and to bear to. The taxpayers to have this information now before we can proceed.
I. I think one of. Is that this isn't money that we have. We're borrowing the money. If it was money that we had reserve account for. We were able to get this, um. It's possible that, that I would feel differently, but. We're in a situation where we're honestly extending ourselves pretty far to buy the truck in the first place. Uh, a quarter of a million dollars were borrowed. And I think if we could. Like honestly, if we could save instead of twenty-five, if we could save fifty thousand, I don't know how we don't have that conversation as. Um, openly as possible. I, I can't stress enough. The need for transparency. I. Come back on you guys. We've tried to put one over town. I don't want you guys to have to, um. Deal with any blowback on that. I think that if you. Guys come to next week's meeting and you make. A strong case for why it's necessary. The town may support painting it, but to not have the conversation, it's, it's the same, in the same way, I think we needed to have, we need to have the conversation about the door. And the building modifications, honestly, so that there aren't any accusations of, of doing something. And, and not letting people know. I've had questions about the paint. I've had, um. Because it, it's out there like, and. I really believe, I understand why you want this truck. I really do. Like it has thirteen thousand miles on it. It has nine hundred hours on the engine. Like. I understand why this is the truck. To my mind, my concern is that if this, this isn't the truck, if it's. If it doesn't get paint, then maybe it's not the truck after all. And so I think you guys have a real opportunity to, to, to really handle this. Directly and openly, and I, I don't see trying to. To sort of slide it. And I know you're under. I, I do know that you were authorized to spend up to three hundred and fifty, but that. I don't see that. You can't. Bring it down. That's our job.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, I want to add it's. You know. We value the fire department. You guys do agree, but going about this. A transparent approach, I think, is going to get better support from the town.
My opinion here is, you know. Sell that truck. He's only going to. And he tells it. Well. I just send two people down the. I mean, three people. These three people. They're, they're working. Because if we were going to have this discussion, because I was kind of blindsided by this, but. If I knew that we were going to go through a vote to have the color situation, I wouldn't have thrown them down that inspect truck.
We were kind of blindsided by the need to adjust the building. Um, so really we couldn't do anything until this, um, special town meeting anyway.
And I, I realized that you weren't authorized to, to negotiate on the truck. So when he called it a package deal, I thought that the paint was a throw-in. And when I asked the question and he said, oh no, you could have the truck a month earlier and we. You get the money that it would cost to paint the truck, like just deducted from the price and whatever that number is, twenty-five is the number he said out loud. Um. I, like, that really blew me away because I assumed it was, it was kind of a write-off on their part and it wasn't really a.
It is.
Price value to it.
They painted themselves. We find out more that they have, you know, this company is the number one company in the whole Midwest. There's no other company that even compares to them.
Right.
Um, they paint the trucks themselves.
Right.
Thought they sent it up to a paint shop, but.
No.
They have their own paint buildings and the lettering. They, they do all this stuff themselves.
Um. He did tell me, like I, I. Got the email from Giovanni. I think Giovanni is the one that sent it about the, with the sales contract. I immediately emailed Jeremy. They're holding the truck for us until, um, next. Week. I s- I said, we'll have a decision for you Friday. If, if the town approves the, if the town doesn't approve the building modifications for the truck, if the town isn't willing to port spending. This money, you guys will have to make a decision if the paint is a, is a deal breaker. Um, I, I think, I think that's.
I mean, everybody has, has own points. Certainly preserving it. Just. Paint and undercoating will go a long way to make sure the truck lasts as long as it will.
Right.
The budget is going to be a surprise to everybody this year.
Right.
And this is certainly impacting that.
Mm-hmm.
But there are needs here and we needed a fire truck laying out why this is the truck. And as Sue says, being very transparent about it, you guys could put something together. With. Everybody's help perhaps lay out the pros and cons and why this path has been chosen, modifying the door or painting the truck. All this stuff. I think it makes sense to the taxpayers if they have all the information clearly.
On your.
Should we go back to the H O C? You know.
Uh, I don't know what with what to try to come up with something to, to present.
Yeah.
Um.
Because we think we're all on board and.
Morgan, you're part of that committee. Right? Is that something that you can see? I know the committee was sort of disbanded because they served. Their purpose, but.
Um, so.
It would happen.
Yeah. To. Putting. Me. I mean, I think that. It'll be. I'm afraid it may derail the process further. But it's, I think it's, but I think it's important. I mean, if you have the information. About the truck. You stated why you want to paint the truck. I mean, that. I don't know what we would do further. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to be. Just getting the information out there so it's not a much.
Yeah.
Why you're on.
No, no, I, I agree with that. I don't know that we, if. Need to put that together, but if we, if we do, then I'm happy to do that. But I. You know. I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow, Ryan, I think we can discuss that. Uh, like.
You know, I'm just saying, just.
This is.
People that select boys are. Much we, we. All ages. And, you know, we can reach out to people if they. Also maybe it's. You know.
Um. I mean, we could, we could certainly. Entertain. That idea. To, to assist you putting something together. Um. I, I think obviously we need to, to make sure this meeting happens Thursday and, and we meant that. I think you having, um, I, I mean, I. Holler even project. Picture of people and see what we're talking about. Color. And that like. Like. It's like you just did. It's, um, I mean, I, I think it's effective. I've gone back a hundred times.
I'm just thinking, what, what also. May help. Pictures are always. Um, if the salesman can send us pictures of the paint where it needs to be repaired, the rust and the dense.
No, the rust, it just blemishes all around.
I mean, it's. It's.
Correct.
Um.
But that would be evidence that.
Right.
That's to make up their minds.
It's. Like it, it was driven by a little bit of church or something. Um, because it's got.
We're. Yeah.
Company, whole US, not a big part of companies out there. This one comes up. The places. Um, that's what we do is old truck. You know, we could. I don't think. We've looked at some great trucks with two thousand. Off the door with hundred and thirty thousand mile on them that, I mean, over here that's sixty-three thousand. They just apparently get called. It's coming out of New York. With. Everything that physically. The portion of New York. Um, they're forced to restruct. The weekends and. So they. He's a lot of people in Arizona. Because. He's making. He doesn't want. Motors can beat up the terrain up here and the bodies and beyond. It goes to that area primarily. And this is those trucks. I mean, the public, it has. Hundred and seven and. We here has thousands of running cars on it and we have ratchet travel on the gas tank.
Yeah, I mean, I, like, I, I think, I, I think you've. Yeah, I mean, I like, I I think, I I think you've you've found a great truck, I think. Um. I I debate that at all. All. Contest. That at all. And from everything Jeremy said. You know, the. Budgets in that. Part of the country, it's just they have.
One of the other big.
Millions of dollars.
For is. We have to use a pressure.
Right.
On the truck. Due to our dry hydrants and, you know, replacements of where they are, we can't pull up beside. We have a draft on the front. We have. And that's a thirty thousand dollar. And.
Yeah. The.
Yes, uh, it may require. And some. And some. I mean, it is. But I just. I I think that in in the interest of. Being. The tax. There's I I. Important. For mistake.
I agree.
Uh, like, I. I don't want. I I really don't want you guys. To people to be able to to point, well, why didn't they tell us? Uh, like, it's it's to protect the fire department. As much as it is to. Us. We don't need to spend. I think if we. If we had a simple removal from the the town investment, it's. Right? Um. So we can talk more about how to.
Like I said, the only reason why I pushed on the truck besides protected a great deal. Is the deal was. Was the get a fire truck is going to get us. And. That's. A long. Yeah. They'll.
Thank you.
Get twenty five thousand dollars to pay off in five years. Plus the rest we sell. My brain.
Sorry. You have to. Yes, I second. Uh, any for discussion? On. Day. And I think that concludes. Agenda for this.
Want to talk to Ryan about one of these things? So after me?
Um.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
I can handle it. And you hang on. After.
Okay, I'll make a motion to return.